Okay, I'd like to call a meeting to order. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Alderman Vaughn will lead us in prayer and then we'll have a moment of silence. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, in thy name, in thy name, Father, and in thy name, Lord, the Savior Jesus Christ, by the will of the Holy Spirit again, Father God, do you hand make service that you allowed your angels to watch over all day long and who you allowed your angels to direct us back to this place? We just want to say thank you. Thank you for your protection that you've given us all day long. And Father God, we ask you now that you will move now, that you will move on the heart of this mayor and the board. Father God, that you will move in a selfless way that in us, that Lord it will be all about you, because we said your ways are not our ways, your thralls are not ours, that our thralls, your thralls are far from the east to the west. Father God, bless us to develop some of your thralls and some of your ways, that every decision that we always will make it will be to glorify you and a benefit for this city. We pray, God, that you will bless this mayor and board to be a friendly city, Father God, and friendly to the neighborhood and to this community, to each and every citizen here. But Father God, you know we can't do anything without you. We pray that you would just continue to fill us with your Spirit, lead and guide and direct us the way we should go, Father God, that this city will see us going in the way of the Lord and they will be so mindful and so glad to follow us. We ask you that you will please forgive us of our sins, there's no only unknown, sin and unseen. But Father, but least, but we pray that you will move on the hearts of each of these departments here, Father God. They will always conduct themselves as the mayor and the board direct them to do. But Father, we just thank you. But I ask you now that you will fill this place with your Holy Spirit, that every decision we make, Father God, it will make you glad, that every decision that we make will glorify this city. Father in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to let everybody know we are doing our first Facebook streaming session for recess board meeting, for a board meeting, and hopefully we'll have some folks who will be tuning in that way, so I'm pretty excited about it. All right, first item on the agenda is approval of the official agenda. We have a consent agenda as well, so do I have a motion?
Did you say we had a couple items to the middle of our?
Yes, and I was gonna do that when we talked about the consent agenda, but I can do that now. We're going to be removing from the consent agenda item, let me make sure I get the right one, item under Mayor's Business, nine, item E, and then under Department Business, eleven, item A, which is the Airport, Airfare for Rental and Training item. Both those will probably be coming back at the next board meeting, but we needed to clear up some language.
I don't approve of consent agenda.
Have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, Alderman Vaughn, is that your second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, and I should've asked, did anyone have anything they wanted to add to the consent agenda beyond, beyond anything? Okay, all right, and I'm going to, I'm gonna read off the items on the consent agenda. At one time we had talked about looking at the six-month moratorium, Alderman Vaughn, did you still want to do that? We call for a quick public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, let me see about, we'll call for a public hearing. Is anyone here who wants to speak on the six-month moratorium on billboards? We'll have a public hearing on that if there's anyone who wishes to speak about that item. Anyone? Okay, we'll close it as a public hearing. Do you wish to add that to the consent agenda, Alderman Vaughn?
Yes.
Okay. We will add item eight A to the consent agenda. All right, with approval of the board, I will read off the consent agenda items at this time. We have consideration of the minutes of the June 6, 2017, meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi incorporating any and all changes recommended by the city attorney. We have consideration of enacting a, it will be, yes, consideration of enacting a six-month moratorium on billboards in the City of Starkville. Approval and authorization for the mayor to sign the First Amendment to the Parking Garage Use and Operation Agreement. Consideration for nineteen youth and four coordinators to attend Mississippi Municipal League 2017 Youth Track July twenty-four and twenty-five, 2017, with funds to be taken from the mayor's youth council budget at a cost of approximately $2,500. Consideration of invoice numbers twelve nine nine three and twelve nine eight eight from Springer Engineering for payment under Mississippi Code Section 25-147. Discussion and consideration of the Cotton Mill Marketplace Project, TIF, Third Amendment and Restated Development and Reimbursement Agreement. Consideration of approval to reappoint Hamp Beatty to the Historic Preservation Commission for a term of three years running July the eighteenth, 2017 through July eighteenth, Consideration of a recommendation from the city engineer on a sidewalk plan utilizing the remaining ADA funds in the fiscal year sixteen seventeen budget. Approval of the prioritized sidewalk improvement plan and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with contractor providing the lowest quote for each individual project. And included in that is an ADA ramp at the intersection of Washington and Lantkin that was not originally on that plan, but that is something that's going to be included in that particular sidewalk improvement plan. Request approval of the City of Starkville Claims Docket for all departments, including Starkville Utilities Department as of July the twelfth, 2017, for fiscal year ending nine thirty seventeen, acknowledging that the city clerk has attested and certified on the cover of the Claims Docket that all claims on the docket are true, accurate, lawful, and proper to the best of her knowledge for payment pursuant to her duties under Mississippi Code Sections twenty-one thirty-nine five, twenty-one thirty-nine seven, twenty-one thirty-nine seventeen, and twenty-one fifteen twenty-one. We're requesting, or we're accepting the June 2017 financial statements. Request authorization for the city clerk office to advertise resource supply for the street and sanitation departments for the period of October one, 2017 through September thirtieth, 2018. Adoption of the proposed purchase policy. Consideration of the approval to renew the lease agreement for Miss Smith's Educational Services Incorporated for the unused side of the Needmore Center for an after-school program to run August the first, 2017 to July the thirty-first, 2018. Consideration of the approval to purchase eleven water fountains from Bowman Quality Products, Denison, Iowa, lowest quote for a total cost of $9,335 with a standard one-year manufacturer warranty. Somebody please tell me that IA is Iowa and not Indiana. Under personnel, we have request authorization to hire Don Estrada as the payroll collector clerk in the Starkville Utilities Department. Request authorization to advertise to fill three firefighter positions in the Starkville Fire Department. Request authorization to advertise to fill the vacant position of a maintenance worker in the Sanitation Environmental Services Department. And request authorization to apply for a grant with a bulletproof vest partnership to purchase thirty patrol vests to replace expired vests for officers with the City of Starkville responsible for a fifty percent match estimated to be $9,750. That concludes all the items designated for consent. So I have a motion to approve the agenda with the consent agenda, and I have a second. Any discussion?
I have a question about the moratorium on the billboards. If we consent that, do we still have to have the public hearing?
We did.
That was it. Okay. And then, it was out last week and y'all had your work session, but I'll have a comment for that in a little bit, but the purchase, purchase order policy, was that something sufficient that you saw, that you thought city attorney that would protect us from anything that happened in the past?
It was just the articulation of a custom practice that the city had, and it was putting it in writing. I did review it to make sure it checked the legal specs from a policy standpoint as to how that routes through the city. That was something that was drafted by the city clerk and the human resources director to make sure that that tracked the way they wanted it to procedurally within City Hall.
Okay, thank you. We have motion, second, we're ready for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have announcements and comments, mayor's comments. I made mine about the Facebook, and I'm not going to add to that at all. Do we have any comments from the board? Alderman Vaughn?
I do. Madam Mayor, I appreciate it. I, too, I wanted to make a note, I was glad to see the Facebook Live, I think it's great. Mayor Spruill, I appreciate, I know you and I had talked about it, mentioned it.
Well, I was delighted that you mentioned it as an option. I hadn't thought about it.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate you doing that, and I want to talk briefly about social media. I think we as a city should make a conscious effort to improve our social media presence. I think there's a lot of good things that can come from that, including interaction with our citizens. You know, I talk a lot about the first impression nowadays is our website, our social media presence is not necessarily walking into your city clerk's office or one of these department heads and seeing them face to face. People seek that use of technology, and not saying that's the only avenue we would use to communicate with people, but certainly have another avenue of social media as well. For example, I pulled some numbers quickly, and we can talk about this more at a later date, but I did want to mention it because we're starting to use Facebook Live tonight. The City of Oxford on Facebook has two thousand five hundred and six likes. The City of Athens, Georgia, has two thousand one hundred and eighty-two likes. The City of Auburn has nine thousand fifty-three likes. And as of July seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, they had six posts interacting with their nine thousand citizens. The City of Starkville has two hundred and thirty-seven likes on our Facebook page, so I, I think we can make a little bit more of a conscious effort as a city and as a board to just interact more with our citizens. I think it'd be great for an array of things, emergency management, economic development, all the things we want to push on our city page would be really beneficial to the city, and I think this is a great start, and as we saw in some local media outlets, we've gotten some praise for being transparent already in the past couple weeks. I did have a second thing I wanted to talk about. I wanted to recognize a local travel basketball team from the City of Starkville. U-17 girls, the Mississippi Elites, won the national championship last week, and they beat a team from Minnesota called the Air Force Ones, and that was in Las Vegas, the Las Vegas Super Showcase, and it's a group of girls, I think every girl but one goes or from Starkville High School, which I think is pretty phenomenal and pretty cool. And we have, and I wanted to recognize too, they're coached by John Outlaw and supported by the Outlaw family, and I think they do a lot of great work in our community, I'm very appreciative of them, congratulations to Coach John Outlaw. And we do have one player here by the name of Carly Evans, she's on that team, she was also on the Starkville High School team that was runner-up this year. Carly, could you stand up, please? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And she, Carly is also part of the mayor's youth council that's going with us to MML, so that is one engaged young woman right there, so congratulations, Carly. Great job.
Excellent, excellent.
And I did want to say to our department heads, or you know, if you've got children or friends of your children or the school board, let me know moving forward if there's a young person in our community that's had a big accomplishment, I want to hear about it, and we ought to recognize it at these board meetings.
Absolutely, I think that's a great idea, and I'm here, let's see, what should we shoot for in terms of likes? Should we shoot for two thousand for this first little bit?
Let's get to two thousand, that sounds like a good goal, Mayor.
All right. Anyone else, anyone else with comments?
I was gonna ask you about, as y'all know, as y'all know, we had a funeral and missed Friday, but as far as work session, was it something that y'all think will continue? I know that's the plan, but what would be the timeframe that probably worked best for everybody, and then I guess kind of just get some highlights of what y'all saw coming out of that meeting as far as saving time in here, or what was, you know, what was said and done?
Okay, well, I'm biased, obviously, but I think it worked very nicely. I liked our ability to dialogue back and forth in a way that we don't necessarily do as we're talking more at one another when we're up here at the board table. So it was a more informal setting, and I thought we had some good presentation, and it was Facebook streamed, so I think it was a good, certainly a good first opportunity, and we're gonna remain flexible, but I would much rather you hear it from your fellow board members because I came into it being biased.
And I was gonna ask a question, how does that tie in on, Vice Mayor Perkins may want to correct me, what is our, like our deadlines? I may want to say that backed up to possibly a Wednesday or Thursday where you have enough time, if we've got to resubmit something, you know, do you think that that's enough, that's adequate time on a Friday to Tuesday, or you think that's fine to leave it the way it is?
May I be recognized, Alderman Mayor? Well, in response to the gentleman from one's question, from a historical perspective, the work session that was held this past Friday was the first time we have ever had a work session since I have been a member of the board since July sixth of nineteen ninety-three. I would say that the work session was very, very good. It was a very worthwhile session. I liked the time. I think a Friday session, gentlemen, would give the board, the governing body, sufficient time to prepare for the meeting for the following Tuesday. I think as the mayor has already indicated that the materials would be ready at least by 5:00 PM on the day prior to the work session, which I think would be sufficient, and I'm sure she's gonna coordinate the staff to ensure that the staff have their items in within the requisite time period. So I think, answer your question, I think the Friday, eleven o'clock's a good time, you know, it's just a time period that we all have to sacrifice, and certainly, you know, as a practicing intern, I find that whatever time that the majority can be here because it's very valuable. This is the first time we did it, and so I think the goal is, and I want to speak for Ms. Spruill and the board, is to ensure that we have an opportunity to, it's what the term says, work the board through the items, and when we get here at the officially scheduled meeting, it's certainly, the goal is to have a very short meeting, which I think is the ultimate goal, and that is, it should be achievable because the work session allows all of us the opportunity to discuss in a public setting all of the items on the agenda, and I think we all effectively did that, so we off to a great start. And answer your question, I liked the time, and of course, that's up to the majority of the board, but I'm, it's a good time, and I think we need to have it in the AM because it gives us plenty of time for the, for the day, and of course, and any changes to the agenda, Ms. Spruill has directed her staff to get the revised agenda. So I think in summation, gentlemen, from one, that is an excellent idea, it's an excellent first thing, the first time it's ever been done, I'd like to see it continue, I think it has merit, and I'd like to see all of us try to get here whenever the schedules allow for all of us, but I'm gonna make it a point, Alderman Mayor, you know, even want to have court to let the judge know if I can, that I'm gonna be here. So that's what I think about, it's an excellent way of doing business. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else like to plug in?
May I be recognized? Thank you. And I would agree, I felt the meeting was very effective, I enjoyed it. I actually made a call to the City of Tupelo about their way that they do things, and they actually have it on Monday at a similar meeting, of course, they've got a different form of government, but they have a similar meeting called, essentially called by the mayor, that's at 4:00 PM on Monday. Again, I thought the meeting was effective, and I've expressed this, and I know that folks know that I've expressed it, that is a very difficult time for me to get to. I did take personal leave to be there on Friday, I do not want it to conflict with my time at the university, I take that very seriously. So, and, but moving further into the fall, as I travel for work, I know personally it will become, the time will be a conflict whether I'm in town or not. So again, I thought it was effective, but I just want us to be open to perhaps looking at different times that obviously all seven of us can be at, because, you know, if I'm not there, I don't think it's fair to myself or my constituents, and I would think the same for the other six boards. So I certainly want all seven of us to be there and work together to do good, have a good time, to work together, and certainly want to support with, you know, the meeting, so I yield there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments?
I'll just echo what was said earlier, that it was an opportunity for us to have a conversation that is different from what we do here in the boardroom. We sat around a table, which gives you more an opportunity to communicate with somebody than leaning forward and trying to speak to somebody at the other end of the table. So that was very, very helpful. I think we're gonna see tonight that it also gives us a much more streamlined business meeting tonight. One of the things that I would see as important going forward is that when there are executive committee items or executive session items, personnel items that occur at the end of the meeting, we're much more likely to be fresher and able to give more attention to the matter at hand than if that comes up at nine, nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night after we've been in a meeting for four hours. So I think it had a lot of merit, and we were able to ask questions. It, Alderman Miller, if you'll help me, since I'm not a Facebook Live person, I appreciate it, it stays out there if somebody wants to see it, so even if they were not there Friday or just hearing about it tonight for the first time, it's still there and they can, they can take a look at it. So it's memorialized.
Alderman Vaughn?
I really liked it, being the first one, and it was an abbreviated agenda somewhat compared to what we've had in the past, and very relaxed, relaxed atmosphere, everyone sitting around the table, and I don't know, I don't know that we ever had a perfect time for all seven of us, and we're just gonna have to work around that, and hopefully we can do that, but most everyone takes a lunch hour once break, and you know, get in and get it done during lunchtime, and stay as long as anyone can, and I understand duty college, you have to get back to your regular jobs, so I hope we can continue then.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you. All right, we'll have citizen comments now. Everyone who wants to speak has three minutes to do so, if you would please, when you come to the podium, if you state your name and your ward, that would be great.
Good evening to everyone, my name is Alvin Turner Ward Seven. I recognize the mayor, Ms. Spruill, Vice Mayor Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Walker.
Thank you, Alvin.
The NAACP President, Chris Taylor, and eighteen. Citizens, we have a few things that we like to bring to your attention, first from being school is not far off, and we hoping that we can get a head start on this burden in school, and we don't have to relive another incident that happened last year, I mean, well, happened with the twelve-year-old. Also, some of the citizens, they are kind of confused about the situation with the sanitation decision, but they're hoping that it wasn't set up. And citizens, how we twelve is a real nerve wracking, and we would, if the engineer and the chief police could kind of help us out, that we don't run over each other, we have old baths and stuff, and we, we really need some direction, we don't know foot-to-foot in the baths, and where they got it coming off, it's hard to get in and out, and that gets some concerns of the citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Well, Chris Taylor Ward Seven. Hey, you said Facebook, I kept searching, and I couldn't find it, so I finally had to get the man to tell me it's Starkville City Hall.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And that's the only way you can get it, so.
Okay, well, we need to be clear.
I think people watching can't get it. Right, needs to be clear. Thank you.
Yes, Alderman.
May I be recognized, Mayor? I appreciate that comment, and I think part of the problem might be too, changing the name of some of our social media accounts, so they're a little bit easier to search, and of course, I can, whoever we, it might be best that we assign, and right now I know it's been Mr. Joel Clements from IT, but changing the name of it and doing a better job of getting like the link out there too from various accounts, and I know most of us have social media and getting that link out as well, so we'll try and be better about that moving forward.
And thank you, thank you. Anyone else for public appearance? I'm sorry, for citizen comments? Okay, thank you. We have no public appearances this evening, we've had our public hearing. First item is under Mayor's Business, and that'll be a presentation by, well, actually, the chief, Gary Schaefer, Weather's Construction Representatives, for the status on the Starkville Police Department. And I can say while Corporal Loveley's handing that out, that I did the tour, and it is beautiful. In fact, we're all gonna move to the police station, and y'all can have City Hall. It is, it is a beautiful building with some really wonderful architectural details in it, that, like those wooden floors that were original, that's just stunning, they're beautiful, so.
Ms. Spruill, can I make a preliminary comment?
Yes, certainly, Vice Mayor.
Just one preliminary comment, just to follow up on what you said, I'm gonna make this one come in, I'll get the floor later. Thank you for those comments, I don't want to get too excited until we address that water issue, five point four million dollars. So, did you bring the contractors back there with you? Okay, no need them sitting back there, they are guests, so bring them all up to the table.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I was just gonna start with a quick review of where the project is currently. So you all have seen the outside of the building as you drive by, and so we're particularly proud of how the building has maintained its original character, and now, of course, that flagpole is perfectly on center with the front door. So when the public comes into the building, this will be the first space that you all will see, and the records office and operators are the first three windows, and the front door will never be locked, so the public will always be able to get into the police building and feel safe. And so there's a public area that is to the west of this, well, I should point out, we had the original drawings, so we were able to duplicate the original doors that were in the building, so when you see those wooden doors with the little portholes, those were off of the original design and details that the architect did. This is the public meeting room now, it will be able to seat fifty people in this type of a seating situation, it has a flat-screen TV, and the blinds can be adjusted, but it has a beautiful view from windows on all three sides. When you get into the secure area, the building with the crossroads, as I call, of the two public places where all the officers will be every day, the seal of the department is embedded in the floor and is a dominant feature when you walk in there. The original stage is preserved with the original shuffleboard court, I don't know that we will be having any tournaments in there, but this is particularly important for archives and history when they walk through the building, they ask us to be sure to preserve everything that we could. So you can see the original proscenium arch is up there, the three lights that are hanging are the original stage lights, the house lights that were there, and this will now be roll call, so twice a day, the officers will meet in here and get their assignments and head out to work. We were able to recycle some of the wood from around the stage when we put the new stairs in, and this will, as the post office boxes, mailboxes, for all of the officers with the original wood. This is the evidence area when an officer comes in, and they have evidence to be cataloged and delivered, it will be put in these lockers, and then only from the inside can those lockers be accessed by the evidence officer. This is one of the three break rooms that are spread out in the building, this is the break room for records and operators, and Ms. Spruill, this was Makita's office, is that right?
Makita, yes.
So when you went in that side door on the east end, this is the space in there now. Those doors, of course, were reestablished with the original doors, so you see those from the inside, but to get your bearings on the building. from the inside, but to get your bearings on the building. When you go up the stairs, we have two new sets of stairs, we were able to expose that original bow truss structural system that we talked about. It was so important spatially to be able to open up that second level and so when you're up there, you'll be able to see these trusses throughout the second level as you walk through the circulation spaces. The original wood is in there, the original decking and the original truss are all exposed. This is one of the offices that has still the original wood floor in it also and you can see the offices have side lights, so that light is able to come into the corridors. So when you were in the old police station, it was always so dark when you were walking through and low, these spaces are large and open and almost any space in the building, you're still able to look out and see the natural light. This is the chief's office and so Bill should recognize that his chair was right to the left of that column for all those years. That's the original column that was up in the building department. The chief's office has a view out to the flag pole out to the front, has a small seating area for meetings plus his desk plus the television and those are two closet doors. And in closing then, the original building when we started is on the left and you can remember all those wires that were in front of the building, you can remember that lid that was on top of the building and you can see how much nicer the top detailing of the building. Those three bumps that were up there, in fact, were the brackets for the three flag poles that are now reestablished. That new plaza in the front will allow the flag to be raised and lowered beautifully every day and that plaza now is landscaped and the original aspects of the building are there, that seal's been repainted and so we're very excited about the quality of the building and close to getting finished. And Sally is going to discuss the question about the water.
Hello, I'm Sally Zoner with Schaefer Zoner's Honor. Just as a refresher, I'm gonna go back to the beginning of the project, just so we can remember how we got to this place with regard to the water. During the design phase, when the police and City Hall were still occupying the building, the staff in the building relayed to our office that during rain events, water was coming in the building through that old back door on the northeast corner. If you remember, that back hallway went up to the storage that was on the stage and then down into that old basement, the firing range. So water was coming in under the door. They also told us that water was coming in the window in the old shooting range, which was below grade. And a lot of people probably didn't even know the window was there because up on the parking lot level, there was a loose concrete cap sitting on top of that hole. So to address the issue, our office and our engineers included in the bid documents corrections to the exterior drainage on the east side, including new trench drains into new storm drainage lines, and we filled the window below grade. During construction, obviously that part of the wall was opened up for some time because we created new entries into the building on the east side and we had to dig down and put all that new storm drainage in and we put a new door into that, the fire stair there on the northeast corner. Once the building was closed in and in the dry, the contractor observed water under pressure bubbling up through a hairline crack in the slab in that corner of the building, right below where the old window was and inside that basement level. Suspecting a broken pipe under the slab because of the pressure of the water, they observed, they put an opening in the slab and they probed the dirt below, expecting to find a broken pipe, but there was no pipe there and more water was coming in because it was under pressure. They typically observed water coming in the opening delayed after a rain event, so it wasn't happening as the rain was hitting the ground outside, it was delayed sometime and that time varied depending on the amount of rain. Toby Atkins, the site superintendent for Weathers Construction, stayed on site after such a rain event to observe the water. He used a shop vac and removed approximately twenty to twenty-five gallons of the water as it was coming in the opening in the slab. After the water stopped entering at that location, he looked throughout the entire basement and didn't observe any other water entering the space. The existing floor drain in the center of that basement space, which is original to the building, has been inspected via camera and the original line, which was clay pipe, has collapsed approximately ten feet away from the drain. As the floor is sloped to the drain, all of the water that's coming into the space is moving to that area, which is what we've seen in pictures, and it stays kind of in that low spot until it drains away or evaporates. Our office's recommendation is to install a sump pump in this area. We would put the pit, the sump pump in a recessed pit with a plate covering it, so the floor would be flush and the floor would stay dry. Any water that enters that pit, there's a sensor on the pump and the pump will cut on and it would take the water out. The water would be pumped out of the building and into the new drain lines, into the new storm water drain lines that we've added as part of the project. This will actually be the second sump pump in the building. There's one sump pump already in the bottom of the elevator pit, which is required by code. So we suspect that this would be maintenance yearly when that one is inspected as part of your elevator inspection. Sump pumps are typically used to keep water out of buildings below grade. This is a fairly common way to solve this problem. For example, MSU has over a hundred elevators on campus and all new elevators and all elevators that are renovated are required to have a sump pump to keep water out of their equipment. We understand that City Hall has a sump pump in the bottom of its elevator and that the county's building also has a sump pump. So we know that this is a common way to deal with this type of issue in our practice. Open for any questions if you have any.
Thank you. So what you're saying is that the basement would never get wet, it's because the sump pump that goes in there is going to take it away from the building before it has a chance to rise up into the basement?
Yes, ma'am. The water would trigger the pump and the pump would be set below the floor, so the floor would never get wet, it would stay in the dry. And the sump pump that we're proposing to be installed is a hundred and ten gallons per minute. Mr. Atkins observed about twenty to twenty-five gallons during one entire rain event, so we assume that it would take a major rain event for this pump to run for any length of time, it would only take a few seconds to pump out any water from a typical rain event.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any, just, okay, Alderman Little?
I walked through last Thursday and the building really looks good, Chief. Proud to know you are. I did walk down to that basement area and I saw the little landing at the bottom of the stairs and I saw where the sheet rock, it was already kind of milled in and kind of musty smelling and where it had wicked up. In the event the sump were to malfunction or, you know, something happened to it during a rain event, is there some other kind of material that we could go back with at that base to where we wouldn't have that issue as far as the sheet rock getting wet?
Yes.
Acting like a sponge and the smell and everything goes along?
Although we really feel that this would keep any water from hitting the floor, much less above that area, we could certainly go with a paperless gypsum product or some other type of material on those walls.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Vice Mayor?
I want to talk to the head man.
Okay, all right. We've got several, which one?
Which one makes the final decision?
Okay, on the...
Which one makes the final decision?
Okay. Mr. Weathers? Okay, let's go with, let's go with the contractor.
Whoever's the CEO, which one of y'all makes the...
That would be us making the final decision.
As to the contractor?
Yes, no, I'm sorry, contractor.
I'm the right one, but I will talk.
Yes, sir.
No problem.
And your name is?
Gary Weathers, Weathers Construction.
Mr. Weathers, we certainly appreciate your being present in our city to do the work for this major five point four million dollar project. Let me say just as a very preface to the five points that I want to make with you is that we received a credible report prior to the scheduled dedication service for the new police station on that Friday, June thirty, twenty seventeen, which was the final working day of this last term of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen. And the report that I received was, which was very credible, that water was in the basement of the building and that was very, very troubling and disturbing to me. I've been at this table with this discussion when it began. The city of Starkville is certainly not going to pay five point four million dollars for water on the floor. The scope of the work with regard to the contract includes the quote, "entire interior demolition and renovation, exterior restoration, site work including new structural, mechanical, electrical plumbing and fire protection." What that scope of work means is that regardless of water being there twenty years ago, ten years ago, five years ago, we, the city of Starkville, have entered into a contract for the scope of the work to include the entire interior demolition renovation. And I'm very passionate about this, but no disrespect here, we want it gotten right. The gentleman from number three, Alderman Little, asked what could be put there in the basement to alleviate the smell. No, we want it right. I mean, we have waited twenty-plus years to get to this point and the taxpayers should fire all of us if we accept a building that has water on the floor. I don't care if water was there when the building was started, that's the purpose of the contract. Now, we need to ask ourselves individually if we were gonna spend five point four million dollars of our own money and we go out to inspect it, would we approve a payment from our hard-earned money and pay five point four million dollars for water on the floor? And answer that question is, is no. So I've heard from the, from the associate with Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Contractor, and I'm gonna have a question for you in just a minute. And the second thing I want to mention to you is that there is no standing water exclusion in the contract. You know, that's why we have a contract, because it governs the terms of the parties. You know, we're talking about five point four million dollars, this is not no easy money, this is talking about one meal of taxes that our hard-working taxpayers are having to pay. This is not no easy money and we, the governing bodies, going to fully ensure that this money is spent appropriately and that the contractor get it right prior to acceptance. The third talking point, the contractor has the duty to fully execute the work described in the contract documents. That's the document that the city of Starkville signed. The project constitutes a total construction and reconstruction of the building. Never were we told that there would be standing water at the end of the day. You know, we had gotten the programs printed and all this hype, all this news attention, WTVA, WCBI, Starkville Dispatch, the commercial dispatch, every news outlet in this state of Mississippi almost knew that we were going to have a dedication service, until the city of Starkville said, "No, no, not here, not on our watch, we not fixing to dedicate anything with water running all over our five point four million dollar building." You know, and we appreciate the contractor, we want to thank you for what you do, but in the city of Starkville, we have to account for every penny of our money that we spend. We are very conservative taxpayers over here in this great city of Starkville, Mississippi, and we are not going to approve any money unless it is done right. And finally, the work reasonably inferred from the contract documents as being necessary to produce the indicated results fall under the scope of the work. Now, that's the fifth point. So with all that being said, Mr. Contractor, now this staff member from Mr. Schaefer's office mentioned a sump pump. Now, this is outside of my vocabulary, you know, I'm a lawyer, I don't know nothing about no sump pump. You know, I know about summary judgment, all those technical and high legal terms, but I don't know anything about a sump pump. So we got some taxpayers that I represent and others represent, we need to put this down on the record, we got cameras rolling and everything going here. We need to make sure before we get you all out of here today, that we understand what a sump pump is. Now, what I want you to elaborate on, just stay specific to the answer, what is a sump pump? Will the sump pump eliminate water on the floor? Will this water gonna be in a crawl space? What's the likelihood of this water coming up on the floor? You know, in that, this is your construction project, are you gonna give us some type of express warrant on the work when you leave here? If it rain again in August, September, October, November, December, if they have some massive rain, are you gonna come back and fix it? Are you gonna give us some express warranties? Are you gonna warrant the work? I mean, we need to know all these things while you're here, that's why we gave you the invitation and again, we appreciate you, but this is just a business matter, no, you know, no, none business matter about this conversation, but I want you to just explain about this sump pump. I mean, does that eliminate the water? I mean, tell us exactly procedurally how that's gonna work and if the sump pump is put in place, will we see any water on the floor anywhere, at any time? I mean, would that, I mean, in other words, would this sump pump, I mean, does this pump function in a manner that we don't even know is there, it does not exist? Because I, you know, I'm not in favor of approving this project just to say we're done with it and water gonna come on the floor. And then what if you say it's not gonna come on the floor, are you gonna come back and fix this at no cost to the taxpayers? What type of guarantee you gonna give? What type of warrant, warranty you gonna give on the work? We need to know that, what type of labor warranty you gonna give? I mean, for what term of a period of time you gonna warrant the labor? What period of time you gonna warrant the materials? So we want to know and we need something in writing on this and we also need something in writing to say that in case of, that one of the parties breached the agreement, that the non-breaching party will pay reasonable attorney fees and costs. We want to have some strong language, in my opinion, to cover this. So would you please answer those questions for me, Mr. Weathers?
I'll do my best.
Yes, sir.
Okay, on behalf of Weathers Construction and myself, I want to thank everybody for allowing us the opportunity to do this job. I think it's a great opportunity for us. I think we took a building that was really not very usable and we turned it around and this thing is absolutely awesome. It's got great space, you're gonna be able to use it to its best potential per square foot. To answer your question, we received today a drawing from Corbin and Legg through the architectural firm on what they instructed us to do. My job is to do what the drawings say and what the architect shows us to do by drawings. As Mr. Schaefer said in the newspaper article, that was not part of the drawings, it was not part of the scope of work, it was not addressed, it was not in our bid. To answer your question, this is a sixteen inch by sixteen inch by twenty-four inch hole in the ground with concrete walls with a gravel bottom with an automatic float. Probably put five hundred of them in, probably never had a problem with one that I remember. They run for years and years, they'll be below the floor, you won't know it's there. There is not a guarantee one hundred percent that you won't have water problems again. This is not a fix-all, this is not a warranty. I'm only doing what I was told to do.
Let me just say one other thing, Mr. Weathers, thanks for the explanation. The contract, and I'm very certain about this, the contract included a scope of work that included, quote, "the entire interior demolition and renovation." So we're certain, and I'm certain as the Vice Mayor and Alderman of this board, of this city, that the contract certainly included language that required in and there to be done because that's the exact term of the contract, quote, "entire interior demolition and renovation." So, but, you know, we differ on that, but at the same time, you know, we need some assurances and here we get at the end of the project and, you know, and we're talking about some water on the floor and at the beginning of the project, we give complete representations that, you know, the building gonna be good and everything gonna be done properly. And of course, Mr. Schaefer's not the contractor, I mean, I don't go by what I see in the newspaper, but what I go by as an attorney... But, but what I go by as an attorney is the contract document. And that's what the judge needs to look at, but, um, you know, but whatever this board is willing to do. Now, let's say we put this sump pump in there. Well, let's say we make a motion tonight and the motion passes with the sump pump at no, with, uh, at no cost to the city. Would you warrant that work for a period of time?
Twelve months.
Twelve months on material?
Yes.
And twelve months on, and like, so if, if the board, uh, authorized the city attorney to, um, to draft up a document and that's what you, which you voluntarily willingly freely sign, a warranty agreement, uh, that allows for, um, a twelve-month warranty, uh, on the labor and twelve months on the, um, on the materials?
Yes. Now, in, in their defense, like Ms. Sally said, you know, when you go in and you alter the back of that building and you close up windows and you close up doors and you dig that back down and you put all that stuff in there, you know, it's, it's an unforeseen incident that's happened in relation to the construction of this project. And I think Mr. Kemp has eliminated it being freshwater from the water system. I think he, it's not sewer. And I, according to Toby, I think it's probably gonna be stormwater, uh, drain lines that are collapsed in the alley. So, that's the reason you're getting the water after a major rain event. Now, that could be one time a year. It could be three times a year. But it's not every day, every month, every week. It's an occasional situation.
And let me say while I have you here, we covered the water. What other, um, matter, if any, have, uh, you're aware of this? Is any other deficiency that we have to your knowledge? Any other deficiency? I'm just asking a general question.
No.
Uh, have y'all finally paved that east side of the parking lot over there on the east side of that building?
Yes.
Y'all have paved on the east side of that, on those, I think about five parking spaces over there?
Yes.
Okay. Ma'am, why are you, um, I'm gonna yell. I need to confer with the city attorney for a minute. While you go ahead, kind of step out for a minute.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a question too. The sump pump, um, does it have a warranty? Is it a twelve-month warranty on a sump pump? Is there any way to know if it, um, ceases to function or, I mean, it's not got an alarm on it or anything, does it?
Not.
All right, so we're going to just hope that there's no water that comes in and check it annually and, you know, it does what it's supposed to do. You've not been called back on other occasions with all the ones you've installed?
They're, they're pretty foolproof. They have a, they have a float on them. And as the water builds up, the float comes out and it's just a ball. And as soon as the water goes back down, it cuts itself off.
And we expect that twenty-five gallons that they got out to go very quickly with a hundred and ten gallon, uh, sump pump moving, moving on? Okay. Anyway, I'm sorry, hold on a little.
I got a quick question while we're talking about the sump pump. Understand that the PD has a generator and during the rain events, an increased likelihood of power failure. Would the sump be tied directly in? The whole building will be ran off the generator?
Yes.
Okay. I figure that's the time you're gonna do.
Not, not the whole building. That, there are specific.
Okay, so not the entire.
When you walked through, you saw some red cover plate and electrical. Those are all on the generator. And Chief has specifically identified what he needs on the generator and the sump pump will be on the generator.
That, that's where I was heading with it. That, that would be the time you'd need it most.
Corbett Legg, I think, designated the panel that is related to the generator. I guess it would.
Thank you, Mr. Weathers. Anyone else have any questions? I'm, I'm sorry, Alderman Walker?
Thank you all. I think the, the, the building is, it looks great. It is going to be, uh, it is going to be truly something that the PD deserves and that the citizens of Starkville deserve and have no doubt that this issue's gonna get resolved and we're gonna, we're gonna be good to go. But to help me visualize it in cross-section to make sure I'm understanding what's happening here. So, there, where the existing floor drain is, the sump pump is going to be in that location just straight down?
No, the, the sump pump will be where we observe the water coming through the slab. So, it will be over in that stairwell where the water's coming up. And because it's under that entire basement slab, which is four thousand square feet, I believe, we, we don't know exactly where that water charge is coming from, but where the crack was is where the water came up, obviously. We cut the hole there to confirm that it wasn't a pipe. We're going to dig the sump there and put the pump exactly where we observe the water coming into the hole. So, uh, we, and it appears to be coming from the east. It, it just comes from one side into the hole. So, uh, we, we do not know how or why the water is there, but we believe that this will get that water out. And again, Vice Mayor Perkins, it is below the concrete slab, so you will never see it. So, when that water builds up pressure under that slab, it will gravitate to this hole that we have filled with rock. And when it gets in there, the pump kicks on and pushes the water.
So, the water's moving below the slab?
Yes.
The water's moving below the slab to get to, well, y'all created a low point, basically where the sump is, is going to be located. Um, and how, how high is the floor above that? So, this is in the crawl space, correct?
No, no, this is, this is in the bas-
On the landing, on, in the stairway?
Yeah, in the stairway. When you walk down these stairs, there will be a metal plate flush with the concrete. And when you open that plate, you will look down and that's where the pump will be, below there.
And it ties into the drainage, the new drainage system on the east side of the building?
Correct.
Thank you.
Ma'am.
Yes, but, oh, no.
Uh, yes, I have a question. What would have been the alternative if this had been caught during demolition and the remodeling process beforehand? What would have been the, it would have been the same?
I mean, that's what we did. That was the reason the hole was there. We put a temporary sump pump in.
So, you would have done the same thing?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mayor, I'm gonna ask a question. I have a motion. Mr. Weathers, um, and I've seen change order number zero zero six, Mr. Schaefer. And it's my recollection, I understand, and just want to get this on the record, that with regard to this change order, it would provide for the sump pump and there'll be no cost to the city?
Correct.
And that this change order that, um, zero zero six that was signed on July eighteenth, twenty seventeen, today, was signed by, by yourself, Mr. Schaefer, and Mr. Stephen G. Weathers. And this would extend the, um, the date of substantial completion for, um, a total of six days to August eleventh, twenty seventeen. And, Mr. Weathers, you understand that this, um, this, um, change order would not require the city to pay any cost for this, this, um, this, uh, pump? Okay, and you are in agreement that, uh, you're gonna warrant the labor materials for twelve months? And, and you have no, um, objection to signing any document that our city attorney and that the mayor may present you if authorized by the board regarding this matter?
I'll be glad to review it, yes, sir.
Well, you say you'll review it, but if it says twelve months, and I, I understand that, but if it says twelve months labor, twelve months, uh, part, you're-
That's what it says. I have no problem with it.
Yes, sir.
When the change order, if the change order gets, gets accepted, there, the city already has a contract, in the contract, a one-year warranty period that the contractor is responsible from the substantial completion date. One year, he's responsible for everything. So, it would be, he would also automatically be responsible for this by virtue of the change order.
Mr. Schaefer's an attorney. What I want to do, I want to make sure we're, we're legally protected. We, we, I understand all that. I understand all that. I understand what it says, but we want to get this because this boy speak through his minutes. And so, years down the road, whoever's sitting here, if something come up for, um, expenditure, they'll know what it says. Honorable Mayor, may I be recognized for my motion?
Vice Mayor, go ahead. I'm gonna, I'll go get to you, Alderman.
Okay, no, no, let me go ahead.
Alderman Vaughn?
Go ahead.
What are your thoughts on this?
As far as-
Sump pump and all, and all that.
Yes, sir. From everything that, of course, I don't have a lot of knowledge of it. From everything that I've, um, seen and the people that I've talked to, I've talked to the plumber, uh, Mr. Joe Sheridan. I met him down there and spoke with him. That's Weathers, Mr. Weathers, and, uh, of course, Mr. Schaefer and his staff. And from everything I see, I mean, I, I, I think it would work. Being that we don't, we're not gonna utilize the space anyway. I mean, it, it's just a space down there. You know, but we don't want water in it, of course, but I, I think the pump will work.
That's what I finna say. We don't want water.
We don't want water in it.
Not for the five million dollars, we don't want the water.
No, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm, I'm gonna go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna ask, were the floor drains tested before construction? Did y'all, did y'all test the floor drains before construction to see if they're draining properly?
No, that, no.
Okay. And then this is kinda cool. I'm gonna say this. Somebody watching live has, has asked, asked this question. So, this is probably the first time.
Oh, that's cool. Now, that's cool.
Yeah. It says a separate monitor system can be installed to monitor the sump, uh, to, to monitor the pump and set off an alarm before it floods again. Is that some truth to that? That there can be, basically that is your catch-all? You ever heard of that, Mr. Weathers?
Yes.
Is that something that would be more of a guarantee for us as a purchaser of this project?
Excuse me, Mr. Weathers. Could you come before the board, please? Thank you.
You're, you're gonna manage twenty-four, seven, and, and people are gonna be going and coming in that stairway all the time. If that's a problem, I mean, it's not like, you know, twenty gallons of water is not gonna stop or break anything. But, I mean, that just, that is a possibility. I mean, you know, you can spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this basement if you want to. And by the way, the ductwork is about three feet off of the ground. So, I mean, it's a crawl space. But, I mean, you could do epoxy. You could do joint sealers. You could do fans, ventilation, air conditioning and heating in it. You could, you could spend as much as you wanted on it. But the simple fix for it is just a submergeable pump.
In the photos that we've been shared, I guess, from July twentieth, two thousand seventeen, if that's a three-foot crawl space, how deep was that water at the deepest point?
About an inch and a quarter.
It looked a lot deeper than that. Those are those photos we saw. That was only inch and a quarter?
Yes.
Then I was, I was told something different, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Vice Mayor, you have a motion?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Honorable Mayor, uh, I move approval of change order number zero zero six. And let me say, Mr. Attorney, change order zero zero six, um, deals with what we just spoke about. There's no cost to the city. It extends the substantial completion date for sixty days. So, the, Honorable Mayor, the motion will read, move approval of change order number zero zero six of the rebid renovations to the Starkville Police Department for the purpose of fully eradicating water in the building's basement at no additional cost to the city and extending the term of the contract sixty calendar days, both consistent with the plans, specifications and details provided in change order number zero zero six, which is attached as Exhibit A, and that the contractor will warrant the work, labor and materials for twelve months and enter into a separate warranty agreement related to this change order. And, and this is reduced and right on pass down to the Honorable Mayor?
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we have, we have this motion which has been reduced to writing and I will not read it, um, unless someone has a desire to again, and we'll need a second.
Second.
A second motion there.
Um, all right, I'll go with, uh, Alderman Vaughn, second, and then further, in discussion. Any further discussion? Okay. Have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Thank you so much, gentlemen. We appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And, uh, it is, it is a beautiful structure and we'll look forward to getting it opened in a grand way.
We wanna get some awards.
And, and I have every belief that you will. All right. Thank you, sir. All right, thank you so much. And we will take up our last item under Board Business, which is, uh, discussion consideration of delegate or delegates to attend the National League of Cities twenty seventeen City Summit Conference beginning November fifteenth, twenty seventeen and ending November eighteenth, twenty seventeen in Charlotte, North Carolina with advanced payment for the conference reservation, travel and accommodations. Alderman, Carver, this was your item to bring forward. Would you like to discuss it or, or?
No.
Okay. Um, do we have any discussion from the board? Do we have a-
Is there someone wanting to, are you wanting to attend or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, all right, do we have a motion?
I had, I had some discussion.
Well, I was gonna go with discussion after I got a motion and a second, so let me get, let me get a motion. You have a motion?
A second if you want to attend them.
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Carver and a second from Alderman Vaughn? All right, discussion. Alderman Siskel.
Um, this is the first major bit of travel that's come before this board. And it gives us an opportunity to, um, talk about what our expectation is for, for travel, particularly for travel that's, um, more expensive than some of the day-to-day in-state conferences and, um, continuing education that occurs. Um, I, I think what is important, because over the last several years, our, our travel expenditures have, have crept up. And I don't know that, um, there was always value added to the city or that it was communicated. There is value in travel, but I'm not sure that it was always communicated well to the city, that, um, that this, this expenditure benefited the city in some way. So, I, I'd like for us to be sure that we understand the business purpose of the travel and how we can measure, um, that benefit, um, whether it's a presentation when you come back at one of our work sessions. If it were somebody who would go into a grant writing, um, symposium, I would like to think that they would come back with some idea about how to, how to write a grant. But I don't know that much about, um, the agenda at this particular conference. So, um, can you, can you explain a little bit more about the business purpose of the travel?
Sure. Alderman Carver?
Oh, go ahead.
No, I'm just recognizing you. That's all.
That's where a work session is.
Yes.
As with all travel, I, I think other than Vice Mayor Perkins, most of us regularly attend some type of training. Uh, I would credit some things such as being on the hometown, uh, committee with the state of Mississippi and getting a healthy hometown grant was one thing that we've done. I know all of us periodically have gone, uh, on some sort of travel typically. And I think Vice Mayor Perkins may correct me, but all the way back into Alderman Corey, I believe we had to discuss this thing about, about eight years ago. What we started doing was some, you come back doing some type of presentation of what you do and how you represent our city. And that's okay, uh, with me to do with this. And then also, if anybody goes down to the conference in, uh, next week, I think it'd be fine for somebody to come back as a group and, uh, and tell what's going on with the city, how we're representing the city, uh, and things that go on in conferences. The grant writing, um, you know, a class that we've attended, something we can bring back and some kind of fruit. Having gone to this before, it was one that, uh, met people from all over the country. It was the first time that President Obama had spoken at the NLC since any president, since I think Clinton. That was kind of a, kind of a big deal. I, I take that something for us in my life I have. I've met a lot of people from all over the country, met people. Oftentimes in discussions in here, we, we hear of different cities all over the country that we want to be like, uh, Charleston, Savannah. Met people from those cities. Uh, as y'all know, networking at the MML conference is, uh, is one of the things. You can just take more, I think, once you get out of the box in Mississippi, you can take more from conversations in, in two hours, meeting people from other states. And he's, he's mentioned other cities and other states tonight and how, you know, we can incorporate social media ideas. I don't know that you can really quantify something. Now, if you're trying to want to get into travel discussions as far as the board and our department heads, that's something that I would agree to, that the last board probably had more travel than, uh, I read some of your tweets on it, you know, and, and, you know, that's something. I don't know if you can quantify when our department head goes and, and has continuing education hours. But, um, yeah, I'd be more than happy to bring something back before the board, so.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, Alderman Siskel? May I? And I'm gonna vote no anyway, but I do think it's, it's a, a, a bigger conversation. And I think it's, uh, something that we as board need to be mindful of amongst ourselves. Um, for one reason is that we set an example for our department heads and our staff. And I would never ask our department heads or our staff to do something that I personally was unwilling to do. And, and we are gonna be asking, I think, as we develop our budget, for our department heads and staff to be very, very mindful of what they budget for travel and, and the purpose of that travel and the importance of it to the city. We have a lot of needs. We have a lot of needs and we can only spend these dollars once. So.
And I'm not sure as far as this board, because I know, uh, and y'all know that the last board took the tone of actually encouraging some of our department heads. Mr. Peters was one that we encouraged him to go to national conferences. I think all of our department heads were, some were encouraged to travel and get more training. And I know we, uh, I'm not gonna say more names, but people are working on continuing education. So, uh, if the tone of the boards changed from, from term to term, that's certainly fine. But, uh, it's, it's different than, than what we were, you know, last time. And I don't definitely, I think anybody that travels needs to bring something back and, and something that they've worked on, something that they've brought to fruition with the conference, so.
Thank you, Alderman Carver. Anyone else? Discussion? Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Nay.
Nay.
Okay, we have two nays. All right, motion carries. And that concludes, I'm sorry, Alderman Walker?
Uh, I'm sorry. I, I feel to-